I'm not the professional storyteller. Let's go ahead and say a quick prayer for the town hall meeting. Lord, my heavenly Father, as we discuss the church business, the church plan, the church vision, we just want it all to be about you, Lord. We want to do your work. We want you to shine your light on the path so that we, as a church family, head down the path that you designed for us, Lord. Please, just be with us as we talk about all the different things that we would like to do with the church. Give us wisdom to do the things that you want us to do, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right. I've got to point out, Donna came over just now, asked me to pray for something, and I saw in her shirt she has a button that says, "I love Don." Now, I clearly have made a mistake in that I've not given Sarah a button to wear that says, "I love Ryan," so... That... Well done. Well, I'm glad you love your husband. He's a lovable guy, Donna. He's a lovable guy. That's fantastic. So, we do want to share a little bit about the vision, the mission of the church, and I don't want to take a massive amount of time doing it. And so briefly, what you see on the screen here, and Ben, I didn't ask your permission to use your back and Henry, but it's a great picture. This is the vision statement that we have for the church. A vision statement should be one that says, "This is where we want to go." This is how we see our church family in the coming year, coming years. It's bigger than just one year. And then, all of our ministries have missions and goals, strategies to help build towards this. So, our vision as a church is that we desire to go deeper with the Lord and to grow God's kingdom here. And those are phrases that you have heard repeated from the front time and time again, as well as they're mentioned also in the bulletin. We want to keep that in front of you because that's what we want. If we go deep with the Lord, as you desire more of God in your life, God's kingdom will be grown in St. Joseph. We will expand, not just numerically, that's... You know what? People love to see numbers grow in a church. That's all great. That's great. That's an okay metric. My bigger concern is that we're actually going deeper with the Lord. I don't want to see a bunch of numbers of people knowing that the numbers of people have a shallow faith. If we have who we have, and every single one of you who are here go deeper with God, God's kingdom will grow in this place. So, the goal is not numbers. I think the numbers ought to be a byproduct of a healthy, deep church. And it's not always that way, but that's the goal. So, the vision is that we desire to go deeper with the Lord and to grow God's kingdom here. Now, before the staff and the elders come up here, I want to inform you of three questions that I've given them, as well as for myself, to answer when each of them come up, which hopefully will keep us all focused on our words. The first one is, what excites you, so each of us, about our ministries in 2024? What excites us? How does, how do our ministries help this church family go deeper with the Lord? How do our ministries help this church family grow God's kingdom? Those three questions. Now, I'm going to start off with some, just about the messages, the teaching, and everything. I think there's another slide if we can go to... Go to it. Well, there's also this verse that we put up there. Go back to, go ahead and go back to that verse. I want to read that. Because this ties into the vision. It also ties in conveniently to the logo of the tree because the deeper the roots go in the ground, the taller the tree goes. When I think about a verse that represents this family, this is it. Psalm 1:2-3. Delight in the Lord's instruction; meditate on it day and night, like a tree planted beside flowing streams that bears fruit in its season. Right? It will always be fruitful because it is planted by the living waters, by the waters of God, one that meditates on Him, that wants to go deeper with Him. That said, if we can go on to the next one. Thank you. No, not the family and outreach. There is... They're not in the right order? That's all right, man, because that one I gave to you last minute. So, depth and growth, that's the one. All right, that's okay. We'll just have fun with the slides. Bing, bing, bing. It's all good. So, as far as the ministries that I'm leading, which primarily are going to come out as the teaching ministries, the preaching, I do desire to see more adult classes. I'd love to see all of you coming to our adult classes in the morning. I think it would be fantastic if we ended up adding on additional church adult classes and found some ways that we can still minister to the kids and care for the kids in those times to help encourage parents and families to participate in those. And if not, we're going to keep trying to find other times, like the four o'clock time that we have right now, so that we can encourage teaching. So, the depth and growth. This year, unlike the past two years, we're not going through the Bible app to do a Bible study. Instead, we are trying to come up with parallel Bible studies that you can physically purchase, or if we have a way to get it to you, we can, throughout the year, that will run alongside the messages. So, for example, we're doing one right now that is a basic to the Bible. When Easter season comes around, we have one, it's actually, it has a lot of Catholicism in it. And so, it's one of those where sometimes some of the studies that we choose are not necessarily saying, "Hey, we're putting the stamp of approval on every single bit in here," but you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Does that make sense? And so, but it's one that specifically talks about Jesus Christ as priest, as king, and as prophet, which is what I want to talk about leading up to Easter. And so, we'll have, we'll have consistent Bible studies that you can access to engage with the sermons, that you will go deeper as well. On top of it, we are working on creating devotionals based off of the sermon series. So, when this sermon series is done, we have one more week in it. Once I can have, once I run them all through a process, we will actually be able to send out to you a PDF that has this series, all those sermons, and from it generated five-day devotionals that you can engage with, discussion guides that you can engage with, and more. And so, a good way to revisit the sermons instead of just hearing it once and then forgetting about it. It allows you to go back and go deeper with it. And I like that because I put a lot of time into writing the sermons, so I don't want them just one and... I want to do something else with them. So, we have that. We also, like I said, we want to add on some adult classes, and we want to continue increasing our community presence through outreach, through the different events that we have, just to be present in the community and let them know, "Hey, we're here, and we care, and we're welcoming and inviting people, people in." So, I'm going to leave it at that. I think I've already taken my five minutes. So, Mr. Mark, would you like to come up? Do you need this table? Can I move it?
All right. Can you guys hear this all right? Sweet. All right, you know what? It's good that I'm up here next because I forgot to say this to everyone. Everyone who's going to do the town hall speaking, there's a box right here. You want to stay in this box or next to this box. Over here, I'm invisible on YouTube, and over here, they can see me, right? So, just in case anyone's watching from home, okay. So, Ryan asked a couple of questions. What excites you about your ministry in 2024? Well, some of that you saw this morning. You guys, we had Garen up here leading worship. They did a great job. Yeah, that was awesome. And there was Katie. She was over here singing. If you see her, you can make sure to thank her as well. Of course, my lovely wife is still over here. So, we want to get some other worship leaders up here. One of the things that would bum me out is we'd plan other worship leaders, and then they would only be up here when I'm on vacation or sick, and then I'd miss it, right? So, we want to do more of them like this, where I'm actually here to enjoy and get to worship with you guys. With small groups, I'm, I'm just excited that you guys are doing the groups. So, if you're leading or hosting a group, could I have you stand up real quick? I did not warn anyone ahead of time. Yeah! Check 'em out. All right. So, these groups are still, they're still going for another couple of weeks. So, if there's, if you'd like to catch the tail end of this run of small groups, you can find these people. There's groups on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. All right. Ryan asks, "How does your ministry help us go deeper with the Lord?" And actually, Ryan kind of already answered this question for small groups because small groups are the church body meeting in a less structured format. So, this is where we should be raising each other up, right? We want to be encouraging each other, but it's not like you're going to lean over on Sunday morning and be like, "Hey, Mark, how was your week?" You know? So, that's something you can do in small groups. So, that's, that's kind of fleshing out some of the stuff Ryan was talking about this morning. We want to meet together. We want to get into the Word together, pray with each other. That's what small groups are for. As worship is concerned, my hope is that the songs that we sing reinforce truths about our relationship with God. Or he asked, "How does your ministry help us grow God's kingdom here?" So, I think that both worship and small groups, they're kind of... They're kind of about staying healthy. Right? Chances are slim that someone's going to be like, "Oh, I heard about your church because of the small groups." But once you're here, we want you to be in a small group so that you can be healthy, be healthy in community. No one is, no one's out there saying, "Oh, I found your group because the band sounds just like the records." Although today, they sounded fantastic, right? But we're really about heart over sound. We're not trying to do exactly the way the record sounds. We know exactly how churches do that, but that's not what God's asking us to do right now. These ministries are about the health of your spiritual life. We want you to feel God's presence when you're worshiping here and when you're worshiping at home. That's pretty much it. I wanted to read the words to one of my favorite worship songs to wrap up my piece up here. So, this is going to be... There's a song called "The Heart of Worship." If you were a Christian in the 90s, you heard it about a bazillion times. Right? All right. I'm going to bring it up, just in case I can't remember the words, even though I've sung them so many times. This is kind of like our vision for how we want worship to be. "When the music fades and all is stripped away and I simply come, longing just to bring something that's of worth, that will bless your heart. I'll bring you more than a song, for a song in itself is not what you require. You search much deeper within. And I'm coming back to the heart of worship, and it's all about you, Jesus. I'm sorry, Lord, for the thing I've made it. It's all about you, Jesus." So, that's kind of our vision. We want worship to be about Jesus, not about how good everything looks, not about how great the, the lights are, or how expensive our instruments are. We want it to be just about connecting with the person of God. And we want small groups to be about meeting together and taking on real life together. So, that is my part. Now, after me, I believe, is Jackie, right? All right.
Matt, go ahead and bring Matt up too.
And Matt.
All right. Hi, good morning. This is my first time up here today, just to see all of you. I'm Jackie. If I have not met you personally, I'm newer here. So, I'm Jackie, and I am the Family Outreach Pastor. So, I mostly handle all of the kiddos, and then my teammate, Matt, here, handles all of your students, which is amazing. And so, I kind of got to approach this town hall, this is my first one, my first town hall meeting, and I kind of got to approach this from a little different perspective because I'm new. So, I have been spending my time here so far just learning and listening and building relationships and getting, and asking God, like, "God, for this year, for my time here, like, what do you want? What do you require out of me? What are you asking me to do? Or how do you want me to lead our kids, lead our students?" And so, for this year, for 2024, a thing that I've been working on with our kids is that we are going to spend our time just getting to know Jesus more. That's kind of been our mantra that we've been talking about every single Sunday, is everything that we do, we are doing to get to know Jesus more. Because I want our kids to walk away from this church, from this place, having a deep relationship with Jesus. That's what this is all about. That's what our classes are about, what our programs are about, is that they walk away with a greater understanding of who Jesus is. And the more we spend time with Jesus, the more we start to look like Him. The more our hearts change, the more our world changes. And we want our kids to walk away with a faith that sticks. When they go to school, their faith sticks. When they go wherever they go, we want that to be that they, they have a relationship with Jesus, that that faith sticks, and it impacts their friends, impacts their world, impacts the people around them. So, that's our, kind of our, my big vision for 2024 is that we're just going to spend time getting to know Jesus more, doing that through spiritual disciplines, doing that through events, doing that. The biggest thing that we're doing that for, through, is we have a new curriculum that we're using. It is called Grow Curriculum, and I chose it solely based on the tree logo, obviously. No, I'm just kidding. I did not do that. But the tree logo's pretty cool, and it goes along with our logo. But I chose it because it is a curriculum that I, that gives me all the content year long, so I can plan out what our kids are going to be learning, and you, as parents, can know what your kids are learning each month. And so, Grow has an app that I know Ryan's talked about from stage, and your kids have been sending home papers. But if your papers that come home are like the papers that come from, from me, they never leave the car, or they never actually make it home, I fully understand. But there is a Grow app that you can download if you're a volunteer or a parent, and you can access all of the content that your kids walk through. It's got questions on that, like, "Hey, today I, I saw that you talked about Jesus calming the storm. Can you tell me more about that? What, what more did you do?" It's got specific questions that you can walk through with your kids, that you can ask. It even has activities that you can do with them if you want. But it's a tool that we can use to partner with you guys in helping lead your kids. Because we only get a couple hours with them on a Sunday, and you guys get all the hours with them. So, it's a really great opportunity for you guys to also walk with us in that, is through that app. So, that's one of the biggest changes that we have is our Grow app, and then it also has lots of different events and spiritual discipline practices and things that we're going to do throughout the year to engage their faith in ways of fun. I don't, I really like to have fun. I am a, I'm a really big proponent of having fun, and I want our kids to have a blast. Because I don't know about you, but if you think about your life, we tend to remember the things that are really fun, or we remember things that are really bad. You know what I mean? Like, nobody really was like, "Oh, yeah, that was okay." No, no. You remember the things that were really fun, or you remember the things that were really bad. So, I want our kids to have a lot of fun. And we're going to do, we're going to have all the fun in the name of Jesus because I want them to look back at church, or when they bring a friend, I want their friend to have fun so that when they think about church, when they think about Jesus, they remember like, "Yeah, I had a really good time at that. I, I felt really loved and cared for when I was there" and have a positive impression of who Jesus is and who our church is. So, that's me and the children. And so, now I'm going to pass this over to Matt.
Yeah, hello. My name is Matt Shams. I'm the youth coordinator. So, 2024, the thing that I keep thinking about the most is being with teenagers and pre-teens. It's amazing. And I keep thinking about myself when I was that age. So, a lot of things that I remember as being that age is just remembering my youth minister and how he found me and how, through everything that he did, it was always, he was always pointing me to Jesus. So, this coming year, that's kind of like, what I really feel is I really enjoy being with all the teens and understanding what they're going through, and talking with them, and being with them, and just living with them and pointing them to Jesus. The really amazing thing that we got going on this year, unfortunately, it didn't really work out for high school because I didn't have a whole lot of people who wanted to go. But the massive thing that we're doing with middle school is going to C I Y. So, I know not everybody knows what C I Y is. So, I just want to look, everybody look to your left and look to your right. You know, you have all these amazing people that we, that we're a family with, and we get to come together on Sunday mornings and sometimes Sunday evenings. But with C I Y, you get, all the teens get to be with thousands of other teens in the same fellowship for a whole entire week. You know, they get to join with each other in worship, fellowship, games, and most importantly, just learning about Jesus. And it's an entire week. It's amazing. And I'm just really thankful that we can at least do it with the middle school this year. Going forward through 2024, I do have, I do want to get into a new curriculum, probably around the beginning of the school year, to where I'm going to be aligning middle school and high school with around the same teaching and the same curriculum that's going to be able to enable us as a youth coordinator and the leaders to be able to understand and see what we're doing throughout the whole entire year, be able to coordinate it with the parents. It's going to be really awesome. But my main focus this year, I'm not just delving them into the Lord, but into growing God's kingdom is because, you know, like Ryan was talking earlier about each one of us and our struggles, you know? And the amazing youth leaders I have, youth ministry is not about me. It's not about the youth leaders. It's about the, you know, the youth. And not just us teaching them, it's also encouraging them to go out and live this way. You know? That's the big thing that I've been talking about this year, is trying to get them more excited for youth group, get them more excited about church, get them more excited about God because that's, that's, that, that's our life as Christians. So, through the new curriculum and the new activities we got going on this year, and just encouraging them to live the way they live. So, I'm a very big one on words, so...
I think we did it. Yay. Family team, woo! All right, now it's Cassie's turn. Cassie.
All right, so I'm up here to talk about our women's ministry. Women's is something that I've been involved in for about the last year and a half. And it's something that I'm passionate about because I know I have this deep desire and craving to go deeper in the Lord, to not just have this surface-level relationship with Him, but to truly know Him and be intimate. And not only myself, but I've also talked to several other ladies within our church who also are desiring that same exact thing. They really want to go deeper. They want to love Him. They want to know Him. They want Him to be the first person that they go to when they have something to talk about. And so, I talked to Gina recently, and she kind of walked me through pre-COVID, all of the things that the women's ministry used to do, all of the events that we used to have. And that's something that over the last couple of years, after that, had dwindled away. So, this year, the focus is trying to get everybody back together as community. Again, it takes the encouragement of women. It takes the perseverance and faith of us together. And so, that's something that I want to start not just doing. We do our IF Conference, which is coming up, and then a fall conference. But I want us to start meeting throughout the year, doing different events. I know we have somebody who would like to do a class about how to do a prayer Bible. And just working on the disciplines of getting together and the word together, and prayer together, and worship together, just so we can grow as a church family. We can grow as ladies. That way, we can go out and minister to St. Joe, to our kids, to our friends. So, that's our goal this year. I would love to have input. If there's any ladies, we have something that came out, got handed out. If you're interested in helping with women's ministry, I'd love to get some ladies together to brainstorm and see what can we do this year for fellowship events, for things like that, to help get us together. We have ladies here that are in all seasons of life, those that are deep in the Lord, those that are new to their faith. So, there's no better way than to all come together and mentor each other and love God together. So, that's what my hope is for this year. And with that, slide IF 2024. We are hosting a delayed event this year, but it's going to be on April 13th and 14th. And so, registration for that is going to be going out in March. So, I encourage every one of you to start praying now and just asking God, just who's one person that He can put on your heart for you to invite? Because that's one step of going out and growing God's kingdom, so... Who's next?
Hey, the elders, if you guys mind, come on on up. We've got an echo here now. Elders are going to come up and, and share just a little bit about some of our needs, some of the things that are going on in the church. Before you guys start sharing, I like the T-shirt with the, with the suit. I'm, I'm serious. I'm a big fan of that style. I would, I would do that on Sunday morning if I thought I could get away with it. Okay. Before the elders share, I just want to say something about our staff, especially because they're all in here and can hear this. The staff that we have right now is absolutely phenomenal. Please. They make my life easy. They do. Nobody has to hold their hands to make sure they're doing what they need to be doing. They all have their hearts, their mission, their focus. And what they share about what excites them about ministry and who they are is absolutely genuine. They are not just feeding you words because they have to try to come up with something exciting to say. It's just who they are. And so, I want to encourage you, please, that when you see any of the members of our staff, and I'm going to include Lindsay Raisel in this too, who does, comes and does the cleaning here at the church, please stop and thank them. Consider ways to get involved in those ministries, whether it's leading small groups, joining worship team, helping in children's ministry. I know that Matt needs more youth volunteers. And that's a fun ministry to get involved in. So, if there, if there are places to help them and come alongside them, please consider it because they are fantastic. Can I ask one of you guys to say a prayer for the staff before you share? Let me give you that mic, and I'm going to sit down.
Can we pray? Dear me, Father, just thank you so much for this, this church and the body. And thank you especially for our staff and just how truly, truly blessed we are to have them all. We've kind of got, in my opinion, a Super A team here. We're just so thankful for that. Please, continue to lift them up and guide them, encourage them, and just be with them, Lord, in your name. Like Mark said, I got the mic. So, we kind of got asked those same questions. And what excites me about my, our area of leadership is just the, honestly, just the people and the relationships. I've gotten to know a lot, a lot more of you through this. And being alongside these other four has just been, just been super special to me. And then, how does my area get closer to the Lord? And to be honest, it's, it's gotten me in the Bible a lot more, deeper in prayer. Just... Yeah, I mean, just, just a better prayer life, quite frankly. That's one thing I'm still trying to work on every day. And then, how does my area help growing in God's kingdom? So, I'm just reminded of 1 Peter 5:1-4, and it, I'm going to read it. Hold on. "Exhort to the elders among you as a fellow leader and witness to the sufferings of Christ." Exhort to the elders among you as a fellow leader and witness to the sufferings of Christ as well as one who shares in the glory about to be revealed. Shepherd God's flock among you, not overseeing out of compulsion, but willingly, as God would have you. Not, not out of greed for money, but eagerly, not lording over those entrusted to you, but being examples to the flock. And when the chief shepherd appears, you will receive the unfading crown of glory. So, for me, the big, the big thing is, is not overruling. And, and at the end of this, I, I'm not being asked to do this, but I'm being called to do this. So, it's just been a blessing over these last two and a half years. And again, these other four are honestly my foundation. So, thank you.
I like you guys. So, I've combined all three of the questions together and I wrote my answers down so that I can be brief and not bother you with me more than I have to. The small group we host, and on occasion, it is positive as it is remarkable. The group has grown to include Dave and Judy Burton, Bob and Sue Bejlin, Kurt and Angie Carter, Jeremy and Heidi Bell, Karen Logan, Rich Brant, and Ron Bell. There's 13 of us when we're all there. I have to take a side note and say, if you were on the worship team, do whatever it takes to get Karen Logan up here. She has the most beautiful voice. Every now and again, we catch her singing. It's remarkable. And don't kill me later, Karen. Okay, so each week, we greet each other with a genuine appreciation for the friendship we have made. Prayer leads to dinner and time spent in the Bible. Each person is given the opportunity to talk and no one avoids speaking. A closing prayer before we depart with one another. Now, here's what's remarkable. It's the genuine supportive words from each to one another and the desire to rekindle the small group this following week. It is God's love at work as genuine and as positive as anything I've seen. My growth comes from spending time in the Bible and allowing strangers to have access to who I truly am as a person. I have learned to lower my barriers and let people into my world.
It's kind of interesting that I get to stand inside of a small box. As, as I was listening to Max talk, I was thinking about our children's worship this morning and we were talking about fears and anxiety and, and going to God and being with the Lord. And one of the fears shared was small spaces. And I was thinking, oh, I'm going to be really scared that I have to stand in that box now just because somebody shared their fear with me this morning. But that's pretty cool. You know, I think about being an elder and what comes to mind and, you know, is it exciting? Yes, it's an amazing opportunity. When Dave Burton, it's, it's beautiful to come upstairs, Dave, and, and see you sitting there. I was thinking this morning, you know, what, when I was outside working in the yard one fall and you stopped and came up and, and talked to me about serving as an elder. I don't remember what my response was, but if I, like, I'm thankful we don't walk around with a billboard on our forehead because it would have said, are you out of your mind? You know, it would have said things like terrified, like anxious, like, I'm sorry, this is me. I'm raking the yard. Like, I, I do lawn stuff. I'm not, you know, the elder kind of person. A lot of prayer, a lot of thought, and as Max said, you know, what, what a great opportunity. And I think about, you know, I'm excited to be able to serve. I'm excited about the opportunity that's there, the responsibility, the accountability. You know, I, I think about what the expectations are and, and everything, you know, we do as a church family. Ryan talked about our vision and, you know, I, I'm excited about not only where we've been, but, you know, where we're at right now and where we're going. And when I think about that, you know, and I think about that in regards to, to stewardship and when I think about, you know, our, our finances and I, I think about trusting in God and I think about going to the Lord, you know, with our fears and, you know, what we hope to accomplish, you know, this year. And when we talk about, you know, having a desire, a desire to have those roots, those deeper roots with the Lord and we talk about growing God's kingdom here, here in St. Joseph, here in Ogden, here in Royal, wherever it is you, you live, everything we do as a staff and as elders is centered on that, you know? And if the answer isn't contributing to that, then is it something that, you know, we really need to be focusing on? Obviously, there's things we have to do. There's things we need to do to make everything else happen. But, you know, when I think about the opportunity to keep that primary this year, you know, in our meetings as elders and, and what we're doing and, you know, Max talked a little bit about, about, you know, the deacons or he's going to talk about deacons, that as we add those roles and those responsibilities come off of our plate, you know, we'll have more time to be making calls to each of you, to be spending more time visiting with people in the hospital, taking communion to shut-ins, you know, doing those things that are, are equally as important. But, you know, again, growing those roots, taking care of our body and, and being there for all of you. And when I think about, you know, the, the financial aspect of what we're doing and the responsibility there, you know, we talked about bringing finances in-house. We're able to look at that as an expense happens. It's real time. Cassie and Ryan do an amazing job with that focus and we're always knowing where we're at. We're not thinking, okay, last year, you know, we're getting the information in, in January of 2024 for September. You know, we're not behind on that. We're real time. You know, we know the needs that, that need to happen in the, in the building. And, you know, I, I think about a lot of our finances go into our staff, but without that staff, are we going to have the programs in place that Mark talked about? Are we going to have the programs or do we have the leaders in place that Jackie talked about to teach your kids, to do the worship, to build the small groups, to help us grow, to help us, you know, have the roots deeper with the Lord and to grow our community? Without, you know, Ryan as our senior pastor, you know, those things have to happen. We've got, as Jeremy said, an amazing staff and, and we're blessed. And that's no accident that God put each of them here. And, you know, our desire is, is really to grow and to grow our community and to make a difference here. And, you know, that's our, our goal is to, you know, support all of you, to represent all of you, and again, just to see God's kingdom grow and, and to do it the right way. So, thank you.
Yeah, so a few things that excite me is just, you know, how we as a church have, have just, to me, been steady, you know, moving in, in, in the right direction because we've, you know, set our firm foundation on Jesus Christ there and, you know, prioritized Him. And to me, that gives us an opportunity to help others do the same thing. And so, you know, to me, one of those things that heard speakers say once, you know, there are five gospel books, Matthew, Mark, Luke, John, and the Christian. And so, to me, being able to exemplify those, you know, principles and carry them forward and, and hopefully people recognize them in you and gives you an opportunity to minister them. And that's to me, you know, where, you know, some of the things that we talk about with building, maintenance and care and opportunities to serve are a chance for us to, to live out those principles. And I know some of the things we've talked about with maintenance, obviously, just, you know, this is a huge building. And to me, there's a, a lot of great spaces here. We've obviously dedicated a lot of time and energy into our kids' wings so that we can see growth there. And I think that's paid forward, you know, seeing those fruits bear fruit as we've done that. You know, we've also taken care of the, the bat problem, you know, that was here, that was a, a health concern. So, now to me, you know, that was one of the reasons why the, the gym has been, went shut up because the, the bats were in there and then obviously COVID hit. It got neglected a little bit. It needs a little TLC in there. And I think that's a great opportunity for us to, to reinvigorate there and use that space to, to reach our community. This is a huge sports town. You know, the winter months are sometimes very low activity months. So, can we use that space to, to minister, you know, to everybody here in this room? Minister to some of those teams, sport teams, helping our kids grow and thrive through sports. Sports are a great way to, and anyone knows me, I'm not a huge sports guy. But to me, sports teach you a lot of great principles of, of work ethic, work ethic, determination and, and that type of thing. So, that space can be opened up. Obviously, we've used this space in here as a way to do movies and do outreach to the community. And I know Mark has some big plans to just, you know, continue to upgrade the lighting in here, the electricals, so we can just, you know, make the experience in here for worship on Sundays, but even some of those other activities are great. You know, the sign out here has been one that keeps popping up on our, on our elders groups about every three years. It comes up, you know, but that's just another way to communicate, communicate to our community, you know, what we do, how we care for them moving forward. And I know some of these tasks might sound daunting because you think, well, I'm, I'm going to be the only one doing it. But really, many hands make light work and, you know, you may or may not have the skill sets to do a job or necessarily the, the physical ability to do it, but, you know, you have maybe the institutional knowledge to, to help someone who's, who's willing to get the job done. Or, you know, have some friends that are, you know, willing to donate different items to help get these things done because ultimately, we're trying to steward the budget. And I think a lot of things we can think outside the box to get these things taken care of in a cost-effective way because God will multiply those things He gives us. So, just think about it, prayerfully reach out to us if you want to, you know, see some of these spaces restored so that we can use them for God's kingdom work here.
Again, I'll be brief. The topic is deacons. It's difficult for us as elders to still maintain our jobs and answer all the calls and help as many people as we can, whether that's going to the hospital or making a minor repair at someone's house. So, they came up with the idea of having deacons and that the deacons could gather people who would be able to fulfill those roles. And I thought, great, it's going to be less. Then they said, no, Max, you're in charge of the deacons. For the building, there's repairs and there's maintenance and there's just common work that needs to be done, anything from snow removal to landscaping to mowing the yard. It would be nice to have a deacon who would be able to supervise that and deal with that issue. Keep that in mind if you're interested. There's a deacon or a deaconess because we can have females who fill that role. We need someone to take over the care team. By the way, Cindy Blacker does a remarkable job. I think seriously consider her for that role. I agree. So, what they do is they, they go out and they help people who need things at the house or go to the hospital or say prayers. That role has already been established and I'll spend no more time on it, but she really does a good job. The deacon for his safety and security. This is something that we really haven't dealt with much, but there are times when we're not really aware of what's going on. We had key fobs that were out and we really don't know who all has key fobs or who has keys to the buildings. So, we're trying to gather those back in and have a, a better control over those. And to my mind, there are times when we have people in this church and access to the building probably needs to be a little more secure. So, if we had people who are willing to step up and monitor the safety of other people, I think in the future, no, I fear in the future, that may be something that we need. So, let's prepare for it and have men or women who are, are safety minded. We also need a deacon that we can, can help with that, a deacon who can, again, monitor it more closely than the elder and then in turn, turn back to the elder for help and advice.
I'm going to try to wrap this up now, but I, I will go over what excites me about I'm going to steal a line from Ryan here. The church family is what excites me about 2024 and I'll expound a little bit. One, I owe all of you a thank you. Over the last few years that Megan and I have been coming to this church, you all have shown me a different side of Christianity. When I was growing up, I, I didn't have a good Christian influence per se. You know, all the people that in my life that called themselves Christians were very self-righteous and, and, you know, you guys have showed me the other side, the, the correct side, if you will. And I owe all of you a thank you for that and, and I hope to, to, you know, be able to give that back, if you will, in 2024. Another thing that excites me about 2024 is a, a little plug. I, I do the membership class and it gives me an opportunity to meet the new people. It's not only, you know, the obvious thing of getting the, the new people in and, and showing them what membership is all about and everything, but it also gives me an opportunity to, to meet those people. And I'm a little bit of an introvert, so the classroom setting is one that allows me to, to get to know all the new folks that are intending the church. So, I look forward to that. That'll be probably sometime in April that we'll get that going. So, is there anything else you guys have?
Yeah, I just want to, boy, there's an echo when I'm down there. Just remind everybody, you should have received a sheet of paper where you could put in some questions and everything. Due to time, we did not want to give like a breadth of time for questions. We can answer a few, but if you have questions or comments or concerns, please fill that out and you could put it in the tied boxes back there or you can give them to us and we'll collect them and make sure that, that the elders and staff can answer your questions appropriately as we have more space to kind of think through it. I do ask that they not be anonymous questions or comments so that we know who actually we need to address. So, I just wanted to let you guys know about that.
Okay. Did anybody need one of those brochures that didn't get one? Okay. Anybody have anything else then before we wrap up? Okay. Please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this time to reflect on what we'd like to see for the church in 2024 and just give us an avenue to express those desires and those ideas that we'd like to bring forth. You, as you have, have allowed, Lord, you can tell the passion of the staff and we just thank you that, that you have instilled that passion in them to seek you, Lord, and, and to inspire those in this congregation to seek you as well, Lord. As we go forward, I just ask that you, you light the path and show us which path to go down, which piece of the building to, to fix, which, you know, person to select as a, as a deacon, just guide us into those paths that you would like to see, Lord. Thank you, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, guys. Everybody, I hope that you have a blessed week this week. Remember, when the Chiefs win today, you are welcome to send me a text and say congratulations. However, if, if... Uh, however, if, if they lose, you can ignore my phone number. Just don't, don't message me at all. I'll be crying in my recliner. Um, have a good week and I'll see you guys later.